Good evening. I think we are ready to go. This is the City of Morro Bay City Council meeting. This is the regular meeting, Tuesday, September 27th, 2022. It's 5:30 PM. We're located in the Veterans Memorial Hall, 209 Surf Street, Morro Bay, California. And one of our council members is in quarantine, so she will be joining us via Zoom this evening. And I'll go ahead and ask, well, let me read this first. Pursuant Assembly Bill 361 and Government Code Section 54953, this meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. Both in person and virtual public participation would be possible. Ways to watch this meeting and submit public comment will be provided on the screen and also is available on the agenda. And with that, I'll ask you to establish a quorum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
Councilmember Barton? Does that join us yet? Mayor Hadding?
Present. So we do have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order and ask you in your own way, if we could just take a moment for silence, thinking and remembering for those in need. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll go ahead with the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand. Thank you. And I'll ask our city attorney, Chris, do we have a closed session report this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No closed session items to report.
Okay, thank you for that. Excuse me, we'll go to council member reports and presentations. A couple of things to start with. What a great concert we had this past Saturday. Unfinished Business. Yeah, I saw you guys dancing out there. Unfinished Business was the band on September 22nd, 2022. It is a concert series of four concerts. Just wanted to remind you that the next one will be September 29th, 2022, in Tidlins Park. And the band will be Cocktail Shorty. Cocktail Shorty. So I know I saw a number of council members out there, and we had a great time, beautiful evening, lots of good music and good food and entertainment. So I just invite you to that. Again, that's a series of four different concerts. Next one, September 29th at 5:00 PM, Tidlins Park. Thank you to the Chamber for last night's meet and greet. We had a candidates meet and greet sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce at the Inn at Morro Bay. I just wanted to offer my thanks to the Chamber for having that event and allowing the candidates to move around tables and speak with members of the Chamber of Commerce to have the opportunity to ask questions of each of the candidates that were there. So I don't know if Erica is here tonight, but thank you, Erica, if you're listening. Oh, you're in the back. Thanks so much for sponsoring that. That was an enjoyable time. And lastly, for myself, on October the 5th, right here at the Veterans Hall, we will have the Candidates Night sponsored by the League of Women Voters. That again is right here, beginning at 5:30 PM. So we look forward to seeing you there again next week, the 5th. League of Women Voters Candidates Night, right here at the Veterans Hall. So come out, listen to your candidates, answer questions. You'll have the opportunity to submit those from the audience, and they will be presented to each of the candidates by the League of Women Voters staff. And Councilmember Heller, sir, any announcements?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the Department of Public Works for striping the roundabout so I could see the crosswalks as I zoom through there. So I have no excuse now if I hit somebody. So I appreciate, appreciate doing that. It makes it much safer. Also want to re-announce the event a week from Saturday. That's on October 8th, Morro Bay Maritime Museum. Family Fun Day at the museum from 10 to 4:00 PM. We have a chowder contest and a muffin contest. And a really special event I just found out about is John Lindsay from the PGD weatherman for many years. At noon, we'll be launching a weather balloon from the Morro Bay Maritime Museum parking lot. That'll be, that'll be a cool event, so I hope you can all attend. It is free, and it is for families. October 8th from 10 to 4:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Barton, any announcements?
Well, I'm with you on the roundabout, and I sent various emails out to different staff to celebrate that. It was such, it's so much clearer and crisper, easier to see what you're supposed to be doing, getting through that roundabout. So that was, that was a great, great switch. I went last week to a, it was the first of the senior center events at Tidlins Park for music and dancing and food, and it was such fun and beautiful weather. And it was just a great deal of fun. And that was, I would guess perhaps 200 people were there. So it was a, it was a very successful event.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do want to invite the public to save the date for December 8th, 9th, and 10th at 7:00 PM. Morro Bay High School in the small gym is going to put on a production of Arsenic and Old Lace, which is a comedy of sorts. And I think that you'll very much enjoy it. The sets are designed by students, and of course, the actors are all students. And Morro Bay High Drama has gotten a lot of accolades over the past few years. So you can find out more by going to mbhs.slcusd.org. And there's a fast find-it sort of search that you can do. And if you type in drama, it will take you to the Arsenic and Old Lace stage. And tickets will be on sale mid-October, but you can save the dates. December 8th, 9th, and 10th at 7:00 PM will be the production.
Sounds like fun. Thank you so much. And Councilmember Ford, I know you're out there. Any announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I promise I'm not quarantining here in the Bay. I am at the
Um, okay, so I have a few announcements. One of them is that our very own Morro Bay's radio station, The Rock, is hosting a fundraiser called Rock Stock this Saturday, October 1st. It will be held at the Morro Bay Community Center. There'll be live music, food, beverage, silent auction. You can find out more at centralcostradio.org if you're interested in that event and supporting our local radio station. And then my second announcement is, I've mentioned this before, and a reminder for Morro Bay Sings, Creedence Clearwater themed, or clearance clearwater, sorry, Creedence Clearwater, Clearwater Revival. Wow, that is not, should not be such a big mouthful. Anyway, now you'll never forget what theme it's going to be. But anyway, it's an event that's being held by the Community Foundation of Astero Bay. It's a fundraiser that supports kids in our local area. It takes place Saturday, October 15th. And if you're interested in buying tickets, you can go to communityfoundationasteroBay.org. And I have another one here for the Chamber. They're having their first of the fall, their Shop, Sip and Stroll event on the 5th of October. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. And you can purchase tickets at morrochamber.org/events if you're interested in joining that event. It's really a great way to walk around, look in our businesses, our local businesses. You get to eat food, enjoy beverages, and great company. And this one in particular is going to focus on the Embarcadero businesses. And then they will later have one downtown that will be on October 19th. And so on to past events that I attended in the last few weeks. Councilmember Barton and I both got to attend the County of San Luis Obispo Animal Services faculty. And the grand opening event was, it was a beautiful event that featured this new facility that serves our county animals, everything from reptiles to dogs. And it's just a great collaboration among all the cities within our county, as well as our county supervisors that worked very hard to get this going. And it's good to see that the animals have a wonderful place to be while they're waiting to be adopted. And so I was really excited to go to that event. And lastly, I attended the Alliance, oh, sorry, the Astero Bay Alliance of Care Meeting, and which is also known as EVAC. And a couple of different things were covered. Among them, be on the lookout for more information on a Latino outreach health fair that's coming up on October 23rd. It's going to be held at a church here in Morro Bay. But I've been told they'll give me more information soon. But it's really important that we get the word out that there is going to be this amazing special event for our Latino community. And also, I found out a fun fact. I don't know if fun, but I thought it was a very interesting fact that less than 10% of our unhoused community has ever been involved in a crime. And I know that there's a stigma out there about our unhoused community. And I think it's, I thought it was a very interesting fact that less than 10% of them, like I said, have been involved in any sort of crime. So I think that's a, it's a good statistic to know. And then lastly, our Thanksgiving community dinner that takes place at the Morro Bay Community Center. They're looking for donations, and those donations, monetary donations, can be sent to Morro Bay Lions Foundation. And I have an address here, so I'll say it slowly if you're interested. It's PO Box 343, Morro Bay, California, 93443. And again, it'll be addressed to MB Lions Foundation. And they're also looking for volunteers. If you're interested in that, please contact the Morro Bay Lions. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. And Mr. Collins, any announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just one quick announcement. The Filipino-American History Month will be celebrated on Saturday, October 22nd of 2002, or 2022, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Coleman Beach. This one is pretty cool because it's a rededication of the monument, acknowledging the landing of the first Filipinos in America back in the 16th century. So it's going to be really cool. There's going to be live music, presentations, and opportunity for folks to participate in this important event. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that very much. That brings us to our presentations for this evening. The first, I think, Mr. C.R. Lara, are you with us this evening?
I am.
Yes, come on forward, sir, to the podium. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay recognizing September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And it reads as follows. Whereas the City of Morro Bay is welcoming, inclusive, and dedicated to improving the quality of life for those who live, work, and visit here. And whereas what began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson and was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th, the United States observes Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories and cultures and the contributions of those whose ancestors came to America from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas the purpose of Hispanic Heritage Month is to create awareness of the contributions of people of Hispanic heritage to the American culture. Many people of Hispanic heritage serve as civil rights leaders and community organizers, politicians, teachers, journalists, first responders, artists, healthcare professionals, athletes, inventors, entertainers, and more. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is tied to the celebration of the rich ancestry and tapestry of our community and reflects an array of distinct cultures. And whereas Morro Bay is fortunate to count among its population a large number of residents of Spanish and Latin American descent who grow businesses, offer innovative ideas, strengthen our economy, create jobs, and contribute to our daily lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Morro Bay City Council does hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month and invite the community to learn more about the Hispanic culture, its people, traditions, and values that have positively enriched our community. And Mr. Lara, thank you so much for being here this evening. And we have a proclamation for you that I just read. And if you'd like to make some comments, we'd love to hear from you this evening.
Thank you very much. Mayor Hadding, council members, I'm C.R. Lara. I'm the president of Latino-Arish Council. And I want to tell you that with great pleasure, I accept this proclamation on behalf of Latino-Arish Council. At the same time, I have something special for the City of Morro Bay, and it comes from the Mexican consulate. And I will read. The consulate of Mexico in Oxnard proudly presents this certificate of recognition to the City of Morro Bay for inspiring and highlighting contributions made by the Latino and Mexican community, enhancing and connecting diverse multicultural and multiracial mosaic of cultures during the Hispanic Heritage Month. Signed, Euclides del Moral Arbona, Consul of Mexico in Oxnard.
Thank you, Mr. Lara. We appreciate that. And I'll have our city manager accept that for the city, if you would, Scott. And thank you again.
Thank you.
Our second presentation this evening is a presentation. And Ruth Ann Angus, let me invite you forward to come to the podium, please. And this is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay designating September 21st of each year to be the City of Morro Bay Day of Peace and the month of September as well. We had a celebration around the peace pole at the Methodist Church last week. I was fortunate to be invited to be there. Ruth Ann has been a great leader in our community for peace and peaceful initiatives. And I wanted to reaffirm with the current council our commitment to this designation of this National Day of Peace. And it reads as this. Whereas peace is not merely the absence of war and violence, but a condition where a society has achieved a balance of prosperity, security, justice, and hope. And peace is achieved through following the concepts and methodology of nonviolence. And whereas for peace and nonviolence to prevail, the City of Morro Bay will endeavor to foster a culture of peace through education and sustainable economic and social development as a necessity for peace to prevail. And whereas the City of Morro Bay desires to promote and respect all human rights, advance understanding, tolerance, and solidarity, support participatory communication and the free flow of information and knowledge. And whereas the City of Morro Bay is committed to establishing peace and nonviolence in the region to promote understanding, economic opportunity, improve the quality of life of the people of our region. And this vision builds on the expertise of each person and involves all segments of our city in planning actions and making a difference. And whereas the City of Morro Bay will work together to create and implement initiatives that not only foster peace and nonviolence, but create a positive and lasting change in our community, seeking to become a model for other communities. And whereas these statements, the City of Morro Bay rejects war, poverty, injustice, and environmental degradation. And whereas each year, the International Day of Peace is observed around the world on September 21st, and the General Assembly of the United Nations has declared this as a day devoted to strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Morro Bay designates September 21st of each year to be the City of Morro Bay Day of Peace and the month of September as the City of Morro Bay Peace and Nonviolence Month. And Ruth Ann, thank you for your great work.
Oh, another one?
Allow you to say a few words, if you would, please.
Well, just a few words, and thank you for rededicating this. As some of you may know, we did receive this on September 11th, 2018, from Mayor Jamie Irons and the City Council at that time, after me about two years of bulldogging them to please put a peace ordinance in place. And I think it was very auspicious that it happened on the anniversary of 9/11. It was meant to be. We really centered this after the International Peace Cities declarations, peace proclamations. And we worked very hard to really come up with the wording that would work for Morro Bay. And I will, I want to congratulate the mayor, the city council, and the past city councils that we've had over the four years that this has been in place because they've worked very hard on a lot of issues that were really rather difficult issues. And they've stood up as a city. And I can't tell you how important that is to stand up as a city and have the federal government recognize that the City of Morro Bay has said something positive and affirmative about the issues of our day. Not the least of which have been the problem that we have with gun violence in this country, among other things, among many other things. I do have about 10 copies of the original proclamation here that I'm going to leave on the back table because there is something, I have a request. Are you ready? I don't think that anybody in the audience probably has ever seen this or read it. And I take, you know, the blame for that a little bit because for a while, it was in my hands only. And in 2021, I handed a framed copy of it over to Laurel Barton. And would you please put this up in the City Hall? Well, this year, we went to City Hall to get the original copy of it so we could make some nice copies for the peace events that we were holding. And I found out it is up there. And they really wanted it back real quickly because they called me up the next day and said, well, where is it? But it isn't hanging in the lobby. So one of my members has said that she would be willing to go out, and we're going to buy a new frame, and we're going to frame a new copy. And I'd like to request, would you please hang it in the lobby of the City Hall so that everybody that comes in, visitors included, can see that Morro Bay has a peace proclamation? And I have a second request. Well, you got to get it all in. I don't think that this proclamation exists on the City of Morro Bay website. I want to have it on the website. It doesn't help much to put a new page on the website. I not only want it on the website, I'd like to have a little line on the homepage that says, "Morro Bay Peace Proclamation. Click here." And that will bring you to the page. And tomorrow, I'll be happy to send the PDF file to the county clerk or the city clerk and the city manager and the city mayor to make sure that maybe by next week, I'm going to see this on the Morro Bay website. That sound good? Okay. Thank you so much for the new one. This is great. Appreciate it.
Thanks for all that you're doing for peace in the world and our community.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Bet. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to public comment. This is a general public comment for members of the audience that want to comment on any items on the agenda for which you cannot stay. This would be the time to do that. And/or anything else you'd like to address to the city. Again, public comment's open for three minutes each. We'll start with our audience, and I do have a number of speaker slips. I'll go through those first, then open it up. And then also go to our Zoom call-in line to see if we have any public comment there. So again, this is general public comment for items on the agenda for which you can't stand, you'd like to speak now, or for any other items that you'd like to address to the city. And the first I have is Judy Brown. Welcome, Judy.
Hello, community. Hello, council, staff. I'd like to talk for a minute about the BES. I have to say it, I love lithium batteries. They're in my computer, they're in my laptop, they're in my cellphone, and they're in my car, my electric car, that I charge from solar panels on my roof. So I'm all for renewable energy. What I'm not for is blowing up our visitors and residents. Okay? Thank you. This BES is going to be a wonderful thing. It belongs at Diablo, where there will be hazard-trained staff 24/7 in perpetuity forever because we have spent fuel rods there. Their staff trained to handle any fires, any problems that come up with this. It's a great place for the BES. And if you want to tie in some kind of wind farm, great place, Diablo. It's ready to receive power, it's ready to send out power. It is isolated, isolated. We don't have visitors walking by it, ready to be blown up. Okay? So let's do a BES. Let's just not do it here. And if you're concerned about the $500,000 that we're supposed to get in property taxes, put up another pot shop. You can do a pot shop for $500,000. Okay? It's the same amount of money, and there's no risk to our beloved visitors and our residents and members of our community. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. So I know during the proclamations, we clapped. But if you could do the wave thing, that would be better because it does interrupt the speaker's time because she has to pause or he has to pause. So I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Next speaker for public comment is Rochelle Wilson. Rochelle, welcome.
I'm also going to be speaking about the BES plant. Tonight, I would like to talk about the brand for Morro Bay, though. Morro Bay possesses an iconic rock that is unique to Morro Bay across the world. It is a landmark that belongs on postcards and travel brochures that identify Morro Bay as a wonderful place to visit, one with amazing beaches, a quaint fishing village with lovely shops, sea otters, and world-class bird watching. Unfortunately, landmarks work both ways in identifying a place. Just as pictures of sea otters with Morro Rock in the background brands Morro Bay as a nice place to recreate, pictures of massive, inextinguishable industrial fires with Morro Rock in the background will branded as a diluted, as a dirty, polluted one. Lithium battery plants are not yet immune to fires as shown by the recent battery fires at the Vistra plant in Moss Landing. Fortunately, the Moss Landing plant is located such that the three-mile mandatory government shelter-in-place order only affected 50 or so people. How many of you live within three miles of Morro Rock? The currently proposed battery industrial plant is located approximately one quarter of a mile away from Morro Bay High School and within one and a half miles of Delmar Elementary School. Fumes from the battery fires are so toxic that the Lithium Ion Battery Emergency Response Guide will not allow firefighters to get close to them even when wearing full rebreather personal protective equipment. Are we giving that to our kids? Morro Bay, our schools, our homes, our businesses, our world-renowned animal sanctuaries will all be in the outfall of these toxic industrial fires. And our iconic, brand-defining landmark, Morro Rock, will be prominently photographed directly behind the catastrophe. What will our brand be then? The damage to the health and livelihoods of our community will far exceed the $400,000 per year that Vistra is offering us. Destroying our brand for such a measly sum is bad business and lousy leadership. Make Vistra build the plant by Diablo Canyon, where all the necessary infrastructure is currently in place and where no one will have to shelter in place. and where no one will have to shelter in place. Let the Morro Rock landmark brand us famously as the home to so many wonderful things, and not infamously as ground zero of a polluted industrial disaster. Develop the proposed site to make Morro Bay the world-class destination that it deserves to be.
Thank you, Rachel. Can you please just wave your hand, please? Thank you. Next speaker is Terry Simons. Welcome, Terry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I am Terry Simons from Morro Bay. For the record, I'm speaking to Agenda Item A9 from the meeting date of August 9th, 2022. I'm sorry to be doing that in arrears, but since the city has set a precedent by affirming contracts signed by its city administrator in arrears, I don't feel too bad about it. The staff report was basically to summarize and reaffirm what's described as Amendment Three of the Deposit and Reimbursement Agreement executed between the City of Morro Bay and Vistra. This was for the environmental impact report, or at least it started out for the environmental impact report. I have a couple of concerns. The staff report describes that Amendment Three will be covered by the Deposit and Reimbursement Agreement, but when you read the Deposit and Reimbursement Agreement, it doesn't say anything about Vistra compensating the city for the development of a master plan for its site. Now, that may be implied in some of the language in the agreement between the city and Vistra, but quite frankly, I think that's a stretch. I think that the $172,000 for Phase One, by the way, there's a second phase implied in the Rincon contract that doesn't seem to be priced, and it's not clear whether that's going to be covered by the agreement with Vistra to produce the master plan. In reviewing the Vistra proposals and the city's contracts, it seems that the city has taken the position that the best project is too important to require public review in advance of approval of the project. And I say this because the city in its Amendment Number Three specifically describes the best EIR as being predetermined, is predetermined, to assume that the best project is already a part of the master plan. That may make sense to somebody, but it seems to me that the master plan for, to be included as the city's master plan should not be predetermined to assume that the best plant is going to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Please don't clap, if you could just wave, just please. Rigmore is next. Rigmore, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff.
Yeah, here you go.
Oh. Okay. My reason for coming tonight is to suggest that the property owners who currently own R4-sown properties listened to the Planning Commission meeting last Tuesday, September 20. R4 is now called R-Age, and some of them TMU. The planners all agreed to downzone all R-Age, striking their use for hotels and motels, thereby downzoning and devalue the properties, called downzoning and taking without compensation. We are not communist Russia, and should be better than that. Did not get it clear whether they also included the R4 that they now call TMU, which are mostly half-lock in front of Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street South. I have for many years heard that businesses would like tourists and residents to be close to uptown, thereby walking down Morro Bay Boulevard to hopefully shop, eat, et cetera, and not just be hanging out at the Embarcadero. So why not wanting hotels and tourists more uptown? I do not get why that should not be a good thing. By the way, my property is being upzoned, and more valuable, and I'm happy for that. Also, many other properties got more favorable zoning. Even some residential and C-1 properties got visitor-serving, the absolute highest and best use in a vacation town. They got a real Christmas present and huge increase in value. Better to give than to take away. Make it a happy place for everyone. Member September Montis Peace. So if you own R-Age properties, go to the next planning meeting, October 4th, and get involved. Maybe you do not like to have your property value decreased. By the way, I really like the planning commission we have now. They are great, usually fair, they think outside the box, and they are very fun to listen to. Thank you.
Thank you, Rigmore. Next public comment is Manya. I hope I said that correctly. Manya, welcome.
That was very well pronounced.
Oh, thank you.
My name is Manya Bedikyan. I'm an architect. I want the city council and mayor and people present, I want you to consider the following statement as you'll be reviewing the draft zoning that we presented to you. I'm here to talk about the disappearance of the Beach Street specific plan as it was developed in 1986 in the current draft zoning, and the effects that it has on the properties included in that area, specifically in Area D, that's delineated by Beach Market, Surf &amp; Scott. So under the Beach Street specific plan, this area is currently zoned as C2, and it's going to be now bundled under the community commercial designation that not only waters down this area to more generic place with uses already saturated in Morro Bay, but effectively also downzones the properties in this quadrant. So historically, transitional neighborhoods are treasured in cities, especially those with historically maritime activities, such as Morro Bay, especially as a city evolves around, along, evolves over time. So removing maritime activity from zoning and other like uses goes against the spirit of these neighborhoods, and also cities such as Morro Bay. So the draft zoning, as it relates to this section, is effectively trying to do what the Beach Street specific plan was trying to protect against, and the city should consider protecting the current, these current more intensive zoning uses, but also allow for the properties in this sector to be able to benefit and operate under different designations, therefore keeping the more transitional and mixed-use nature. And again, if you have any questions or require more support, I have produced the full zoning comparative analysis that I've submitted to the city council that I could forward also, and as well as multiple precedents of how these neighborhoods and sectors are treasures for cities. Thank you.
And did you say you have submitted that in writing?
I have submitted to planning, I could forward it to the city.
That would be great. Very much appreciated, thank you. Next public comment is Joan Beckick. Did I miss it?
Baric.
Baric, sorry. Welcome, Joan.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm Joan Baric. I'm a six-year resident here in Morro Bay, and I'm here as a private citizen to share my opinion. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I am against the Vistra Energy Battery Proposal being located here in the heart of Morro Bay. I recognize that there are pros and cons associated with this project proposal, but I believe the losses far outweigh the gains. Among the gains, potential gains I see for this city is increased revenue that could be applied to the general and the harbor funds. Another is that it would help our power grid, and is in keeping with California's mandate to transition from fossil fuels that would benefit our environment. Vistra Energy obviously sees the Morro Bay site as the ideal location. After all, they own the land. But as they indicated, they have many other locations that they can pursue, which are not populated as Morro Bay is. Wisely, they located the current biggest plant in Moss Landing, and as was previously indicated, there's a population of about 50 people there. The predicted losses to our Morro Bay community are innumerable. A facility this size and nature poses a serious health and safety risk, not only to our approximately 11,000 residents and 800,000 visitors, but to our pristine environment, which is a bird sanctuary to thousands of migrating birds on a 2,300-mile estuary. Second to tourism is our fishing industry, which has placed Morro Bay on the map as a charming seaside fishing village. Obviously, there are many things to be considered in transitioning from our dependence on fossil fuels, but we need to ensure that we do not create more havoc in our environment, such as devastating volatile fires from lithium-ion batteries, releasing up to 100 toxic gases into our environment, including carbon monoxide. The gases are potentially fatal, and they harm the wider environment, our air, our water, our wildlife, our natural habitats. Firefighters have been injured and have died from lithium battery fires at storage plants. No pun intended, this is a pretty explosive topic for Morro Bay.
Thank you. Go ahead, do you have, go ahead, finish.
Just a little bit.
Sure, just quickly.
I hope that you have sufficient reservations to take the steps necessary to stop this proposal from going further. If not, like Ruth, I have two recommendations. One, schedule one or more community forum study sessions after the environmental impact report is released. Two, place this topic on the agenda for a future city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Cindy Muir. Welcome, Cindy.
Hello, my name is Cindy Muir. I'm a resident of North Morro Bay. I came to let you know that I am 100% against the Vistra battery storage for all the reasons that have been mentioned here already. I'm not as colorful as Ms. Judy Brown, but the message is the same. And here's the deal. We are pristine, and we have a bird sanctuary, and we have a high school, and we have a tourism area, and we have residents all too close to that site. And we have no margin of error. If there should be a fire, which I'm sure they are trying to do everything to make that safer, or whatever, we don't have any margin for error. Whether it's water or anything, and speaking of water, didn't California put out a report and say that we have sea rise, sea level rise worries? Why would you put a battery plant that is toxic at sea level? I mean, it boggles the mind. This is our town. Do not do this for any price. We can't replace with money what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a wave. This is a clap. I'm just asking, please. That's all. Thank you very much. Next up is Joyce Hunter. Welcome, Joyce.
Hi, I'm Joyce Hunter, resident of Morro Bay, concerned citizen, and I want to thank the mayor, the city council, and various officers and employees of the city for the work you do. It's really appreciated, thank you. I'm here again to discuss concerns regarding the proposed battery plant. I think I have four quick bullet points. One, the recent fires at Moss Landing are literally a wake-up call. They're right on the heels of all the work that's being done, and it's important that we not close our eyes to the concerns that they portend for our own city. I think that we need to consider the location of the battery plant, right on the ocean, as others have said, right next to the high school, and there were high schools closed in the areas of the battery plants, right now up at Moss Landing, the Embarcadero, and what that could do to the air quality, and local homes. We talked about environmental degradation. That was in one of our just recent proclamations tonight. I think we need to be thinking seriously about the environmental degradation that this plant could provide for our city, which is really scary. I request that you require, in the environmental impact study, alternatives to lithium-ion batteries. There are other alternatives, they need to be looked at, in serious stand that the city would take, saying, what research is out there? What's available besides lithium-ion? And let's face it, you can't fly in a plane and put it in your luggage, right? You got to have it on your person. If it's going to burn up, it's going to be on you so you can deal with it. And those are just small batteries, not something that is much larger than the Moss Landing plant. And I ask then for my fourth bullet point, for you to really consider that we not to trade revenue for the city at the expense of air quality, safety, and the visual effect and the environment, and find other alternatives for this. You know, you look at today's budgets, the amount of money that we're looking at, and what we're trading it for could be addressed in other venues than trading it for those precious things as someone else said that money can't buy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, did well, that's good. I saw a lot of hands doing it, appreciate that. Barry Brennan, welcome, Barry.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for letting us have this public comment time. People have spoken so well, I think I want to back up a second. We have an anniversary today. This is one week, seven days ago, in Moss Landing. PG&E had a fire at their battery plant that they opened in April of this year. So they didn't even get six months, and they had their first battery fire. And you've heard something about it. So I think the best way to talk about it is, there's a local TV station up there that went to the site. It's KSBW of Salinas. And they sent a reporter to the site to talk about this project, and they interviewed people on site. Now, the video, you can call it up online, but I'm going to just summarize it quickly. It starts out that Moss Landings are worried for their safety after PG&E's battery fire. Residents say they feel unsafe in their neighborhood after the battery fire caught early Tuesday morning at PG&E's newest power plant. The fire caused a day-long shelter-in-place advisory for the entire Moss Landing community. Quotation marks, "We like to maintain our windows open, so it's concerning what's in the air. What kind of chemical and what kind of effect can that have on our health?" one resident said to the reporter. The population of Moss Landing is below 50, as you've heard, with all of the residents living within three miles. I've been there. It's all nice agriculture around it. Richard Stedman, an air pollution officer with the Monterey Bay Air Resource District, said the following. "We know that in battery fires, lithium battery fires, there are toxics, that are released. Among these are hydrogen fluoride gas, hydrochloric acid, which is also a gas. These toxic gas emissions cause nausea, headaches, high irritation. Limited studies have found on a battery fire long-term effect, they don't even know yet how bad it's going to be. Battery power plants like the Tesla-powered PG&E facility are relatively new. The old joke in our family was, you know how you tell the pioneers, they're the ones with the arrows in the back? Let's not have that here. The utility service, when the fire happened, it happened at 1:30 in the morning. The North Monterey County Fire Department issued a shelter-in-place at 9:18, eight hours later, before they figured out what the heck was going on and got everybody to stay home." One of the Moss Landings further said, "By the time the county called to tell us to close the windows and shelter in place," a lot of time, in fact. close the windows and shelter in place," a lot of time had passed. The reporter went on to say, "The cause of the fire is still not known. PG and Tesla will conduct a joint investigation." I would add that the adjacent Vistra battery fire, they had two fires. Their last one was September. So we've had three fires, same location. Please don't expose us to that.
Thanks, Barry.
You have the ability to change it. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up for public comment is Linda Winters. Welcome, Linda. Are you back there? Yeah, there you are.
I have to say right off the top, I love this city. As Senora Laro was leaving here, he commented about my hat. Asked me if I wanted to trade. The reason for my hat is because I had my eyes dilated earlier today, and it's kind of protecting me from all this light. Councilpeople, staff, chiefs, I am Linda Winters, a 28-year resident of one of the 14 mobile home parks here in Morro Bay. First off, I would ask each and every wonderful resident that has thrown their hats into the candidate's ring to familiarize themselves on October 5th with a very important ordinance, the Morro Bay Rent Stabilization Ordinance Number 499. For those of us that live in any of one of Morro Bay's parks, this ordinance is our safety net. It helps us to stay in our homes without fear of being priced out by unreasonable rent increases. Let me explain a bit about Mobile Home Financing 101. We own our homes, but we rent the spaces that our homes are placed on. Let me repeat that. We own our own homes, but pay space rent every single month, month after month, year after year. The Morro Bay Rent Stabilization Ordinance creates a cap on any rent increase. The park owners are allowed one increase each year. That increase is 75% of the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. This year, that increase was a whopping 7.6%. So we all received a 5.7% increase. That translates to approximately $20 to $30 a month more. We all have had to tighten our financial belts in the past years. This is one more increase for those of us that live on fixed incomes. We need to keep our rent stabilization ordinance safe. Other towns that don't have RSOs are at the mercy of owners that can charge them anything they want. Some have rent increases up to 200% to 300%. We mobile homeowners have invested in Morro Bay. Now we ask Morro Bay to keep our investments safe with this ordinance. As it has been said so many times, this is our only affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Next up is Gary Johnson. Gary, welcome.
Well, the last time was, look, here was only Barry and I against this, and now it looks like the whole town is. Anyway, welcome, city council and mayor, and let's hope you're all doing good. Okay, my topic is, of course, Morro Bay Lithium Battery Storage Facility. Morro Bay City Manager and City Council are considering one of the world's largest lithium storage facilities within blocks of neighborhoods where hundreds of people are now living, near Morro Bay High School, and I lived two blocks from it. After doing my research in this subject, it's my opinion that the downtown Morro Bay is not the right place to put a highly dangerous lithium facility in Morro Bay. I believe that ion battery technology, but I highly am in favor of that, but not as a facility. This is a large residential neighborhood. The technical research I've been reading about is all this right here, even FEMA's involved in it, that a storage facility this large is not well-developed technology. This is currently not enough data experience possible to understand the implications of this site. Arizona, Chandler, Arizona, and Phoenix have had fires. One was so bad it blew the doors open and almost killed the city. The fire chief and one guy might still be in the hospital with brain traumas. Okay, other problems around the world, I've researched, China, Norway, Germany, South Korea, all have problems. The modular design may be a good one, but can also have problems. The ion batteries are very sensitive to mechanical damage and water, which can lead to battery explosion and fires. The facility will be near earthquake faults. If and when a tsunami hits this area, we're all in trouble. Remember, the decision was made to move the sewer system because of the possible tsunami. This storage system is going to be right in the middle of the sewer plant, for God's sakes. God, the chemicals in lithium-ion batteries are known from the state of California as causing cancer and defects. Finally, I'm not against the lithium storage projects because of the dangers inherited in the currently proposal. It should be located at a safer location like Diablo. I won't go into Moss Landing, and I won't go into the estuary. While groups concerned about, this has already been mentioned, while groups are concerned about the climate change and ocean, I can't understand why these groups aren't actively fighting this Morro Bay location. If you have a lithium-ion storage system failure, it would be if chemicals and fumes expose Morro Bay citizens, estuary tourists, Morro Bay High School, and RV parks. I've got 16 seconds. I've been in the space station technology for 40 years, and I'm one of the top failure analysis engineers at Lockheed Corporation. I've been on dozens and dozens of hundreds of failure analysis. The main thing is, I've learned, somebody's done something stupid. The technology is there, but somebody's going to do something stupid, and this is what's happening to all these problems.
Thank you, Gary.
Somebody's done something stupid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, anyway.
Next speaker, waving. Yeah, I got the wave. Thank you. No claps, please. Thank you. Judy, is it Judy or Trudy? Judy, I think. Setting, Judy? Is that a J? Did I get it right?
It's a J.
Thank you. Welcome, Judy.
I'm Judy Setting, and this is my husband, Rocky Setting.
Can you get up to the mic so that, thank you.
And we are ancient Morro Bay residents. We go way, way back. So, thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak. As part of Vistra Lithium Ion Battery Energy Storage System, BES, project, and the environmental investigation report process, please accept the following information pointing to environmentally hazardous impacts installing a toxic lithium-ion BES would have on Morro Bay's students, tourists, Highway 1 commuters, wildlife, and citizens. Lithium BES dangers. This is an excerpt from a principal investigator from University of Texas at Austin, and it can be found on the FEMA.gov website. Unfortunately, these lithium cells can experience thermal runaway, which causes them to release very hot, flammable, toxic gases. In large storage systems, failure of one lithium cell can cascade to include hundreds of individual cells. The hot, flammable gases can result in an explosion or a very difficult-to-extinguish fire. One of the biggest lessons learned for the systems are equally un, I'm sorry, one of the biggest lessons learned for the fire service is that the utilities and commercial entities that own large battery systems are equally unfamiliar with the potential fire hazards. As well, there remain many questions about the toxicity of the battery vent gas. Boy, I can play a tennis match competition, but I can't public speak. I'm so.
You're doing fine. Take your time. Take your time. You're doing just fine.
And I want him to take over, but he told me I had to be brave.
You're doing fine.
Okay, thank you. Several explosions, oh, I'm sorry. My next paragraph is a firsthand account from parents of North Monterey County High School students. Several explosions and fires have occurred in Vistra's newly-developed Moss Landing BES. These are not isolated events and will happen on a regular basis. The most recent fire produced toxic air quality and resulted in a three-mile radius shelter-in-place order, school lockdowns, and Highway 1 closures. Now, this is my nephew that attends Monterey North County High School. They were closed inside for like five hours, and residents were, and it's what's in the air. It just happened, the wind was blowing towards their high school, and it's three or four miles away. And Highway 1 was closed also, right there. Morro Bay citizens, oh, Morro Bay citizens.
Go ahead and finish your sentence. That's okay.
Oh, I have a lot more.
Yeah, I know.
Can be sure of several things. Vistra's toxic lithium-ion BES will have fires that result in closures for Morro Bay High School, Highway 1, Morro Dunes RV Park, access to Morro Rock, the bike path, and the Embarcadero.
Judy, can we wrap it up? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. And by the way, you can submit that in writing as well.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Linda Merrill. Welcome, Linda.
Well, good evening, council. Long time no see. You've got new chairs since I was here. That's how long it's been. Good evening, mayor, council staff, and folks at home. I'm Linda Merrill. I'm sorry I haven't come to, I'm sorry I haven't come to more meetings and told you all how much I appreciate what you do to keep this city running smoothly. I do watch all of the meetings on television, and I'm just impressed with all you do. I read Mayor Collins's monthly report and am astounded by everything that he has done, has been done. The tremendously difficult job of getting the wharf built baffles my mind. Hard-working men doing the impossible job, a lot under Quintana Road, buried several feet underground, working around shoppers on their way to Albertson's and all the businesses, traffic controls. I always wave at the flag people. "Good job," I say. This COVID pandemic has stressed everyone out, but you, mayor, steered this ship without a glitch. Thank you. All of you council members have showed your support from beginning to end. I'm thinking 40 years I've viewed the workings of mayors, council members, and managers, and honestly, you guys are the best. Thank you so much. Morro Bay is facing more huge challenges with the prospect of a battery storage, which I favor, the wind farm, which I favor again, and a less difficult, lengthy, and an endless difficult, lengthy process for our town. We are very lucky to live in this beautiful place among wonderful people. Maybe we should look around and enjoy it more. People get to say what they want, but not to be rude, not attack you, mayor, personally. I want you all to know, for every person who stands here and complains, there are many at home grateful and talking to the television and saying, "I support what you guys are doing." I really appreciate everything you do, and politics often brings out the worst in people, so it's important that everyone remember, we are all neighbors. We all want the same thing, a good place in which to live. Thank you again, and keep up your good work.
Thank you, Linda.
We need stability in this unsettling world. Have a good meeting. Thank you.
Next up is Erica Crawford, our chamber president and CEO. Welcome, Erica.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. Just a couple of invitations for you, and I think this has already been plugged a couple of times, but we are doing a community-wide candidate forum next Wednesday, right here at the Vets Hall, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. All of the candidates for mayor and city council have been invited to participate. It will be broadcast live, rebroadcast on Channel 20 and on slowspan.org, and the forum will be moderated by the League of Women Voters. And then, getting back into mission-aligned events at the chamber, we're doing a fall and winter series of shop sip-and-stroll. This is a, we intentionally craft these to take place in the off-season and midweek. The purpose of these events is to bring businesses together, to collaborate together, to offer sips or little bites of things inside of shops, but also to invite neighbors, our community, to cross the threshold of businesses in our community to meet their fellow neighbors. So it's sampling food and beverage. You'll get a custom glass and a cute shopping tote, and it's taking place in the Embarcadero on the 5th and on the 19th in the downtown. And information is on morrochamber.org. That's it. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Next up is, let's see, David Yeager. David, welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name's David Yeager. I'm with Vistra Corp., and probably the most unpopular man in the room right now. Just a couple of comments. I had a couple of things, really just to clarify, a couple notes. First of all, yeah, the most recent event that's kind of made news is in Moss Landing, but it is in no way, shape, or form a Vistra battery, Vistra property. We own and operate the facility adjacent, so just wanted to make that clear. One other clarity, too, I just wanted to make sure that it's been reported a lot of different ways, but there was never a fire at the Vistra facility. There is a whole separate type of incident, and there was never an explosion. I know that because I was there, and I can certainly attest to that. You know, one thing I can comment toward the event is that at Vistra, we're constantly evaluating the technology and the safety systems that go in and around the technology. And as the learnings from this event do come out, that's something we're going to pay very, very close attention to. Evolution of iPhone and any other technology, by the time Morro Bay's project rolls around, the technology is going to be at a level that it's going to be substantially safer than I think you're currently going to see it. So we'll keep that in mind. And inside the process of this evaluation is what we're just now entering into with our application to the city. It's going to be a robust process. That evaluation's going to occur. There's going to be a lot of opportunity for public input, so I really appreciate hearing all the concerns. They need to be addressed, guys, and I'll attest to that. And what Vistra can commit to is being fully involved to address those concerns and walk through all the technology, all the, we'll be fully transparent in how we go about doing that. Really just want to share that. Last note, I just really want to also note that there has been zero technology selected for this project at all. That's going to be a part of the evaluation, and it's truly an output of public comment, working with the city, and a lot of those different functions. So as we kind of progress the project, that's something that we're going to want to pay very close attention to, listen to the public for, and really just have input with the city. It's a true partnership as we go through this. We will be owning and operating the facility after we build it, if it can progress that far. And, you know, the number one asset in our company is our people. So we're going to have people in and around this facility, and in no way, shape, or form is Vistra interested in building something unsafe. That's just not going to happen. So I think those are really it. I'm going to hang around public if you want to chat a little bit. Just let me know. So, thank you.
Thank you, David. That's the last speaker slip that I have, but as usual, I'm happy to take anybody else that might want to come up that's here this evening and speak. Just come on up. You don't have to raise your hand. You can walk on down. You can say your name or not, but welcome, whomever you are.
Hi, my name's Dave Boyd. I'm a new resident, three years ago, in Morro Bay. I guess the advantage of speaking after Vistra does is that they already admitted that the technology's currently not safe. So I just want to say good evening to the mayor, city council, and staff, and regarding that property, I just have some bullet points. Lithium batteries are an unproven technology. The airlines won't allow them to. The airlines won't allow them to fly due to the explosion fire hazard. They have burned down planes, trains, and automobiles, as well as many commercial and residential buildings. Firefighters are instructed not to fight lithium battery fires. I wanted to point out that currently, the way the proposed battery farm is set up in the drawings and the prospectus that they've put out, compared to the Moss Landing facility, the Moss Landing facility is an open architecture facility where the batteries are outside. The Morro Bay facility would be enclosed in buildings. It's pretty much guaranteed at some point you're going to have a fire. If that fire starts, the building on fire takes out the whole building and creates, catches the other batteries on fire, what's that going to end up with? The Moss Landing facility is a 300-unit battery farm versus a 600-unit battery farm that they want to currently put here at Morro Bay. This would be the largest currently battery farm in the world here at Morro Bay on our tourist coastline. The other thing I just wanted to point out was, what is the umbrella policy that Morro Bay carries for insurance to cover all the lawsuits after this pretty much thing could possibly burn down a big part of the city or destroy that and the tourism? It just seems like this property could have a better use for revenue, maybe another small hotel or something, rather than a battery farm on sea level and some of the other points that somebody, other people have respectfully noted much better than I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, and welcome. Yes, please come forward. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Pam Doherty, and I've lived now in Morro Bay for five years. I love living here. I feel really privileged to be able to live in such a beautiful place. And I was going to speak about Vistra, but most others said the things that I wanted to say today, but I wanted to make a couple additional points. One is that this Moss Landing incident wasn't isolated, as others have stated, and there's a really great article that came out in the Washington Post today that I really encourage all of you to read, that the title is Tesla's Big Batteries Aren't the Problem, Lithium Is?, that talks about incidents across the world. And so what I would really like to request of you, the council members, is to not just rely on the safety information that Vistra is providing to you, but to do your own research, and maybe you already have, but research these incidents across the world and what is actually occurring. Because there was even a FEMA report in 2020 that talks about the dangers of this technology, and even states that firefighters have to do specialized training in order to deal with these fires. Personally, I think our firefighters in California have enough on their hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was it Kim, I think? Kim? Right.
I'm sorry.
Cam or Kim?
Pam.
Pam.
Doherty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Anybody else? Public comment's still open. Come on down. Uh-oh. First come, first served. Welcome.
My name is Tori Stanley, and I am a new resident. I just bought my forever wonderful retirement home July 1st in Morro Bay. I moved here from Phoenix, and several reasons as to why I moved. One person mentioned some of the battery problems, et cetera, but I just feel like I just got a double kick in my gut because I left an area that had problems to an area that's thinking about having the same problems. And I call this place paradise because it is pristine. The air is pristine, the views are pristine. I mean, you know, where else can you go? You think about taking a vacation somewhere, but where can you get all this beauty and fresh air, have your doors open, have your breezes come through, and you don't have the choking anymore, you don't have the coughing, sneezing, and all that kind of stuff? And here we are talking about installing something that has a major possibility of creating all that garbage that we have heard around the United States. It isn't just a lithium battery company. You know, it's like Air Force bases that have now contaminated more water wells than we can count. Mayfair Field, Luke Air Force Base, and Litchfield Park. I mean, I've been at both of them, you know? And every time I move, it seems to be that I'm running into all these things. And I had hoped that Morro Bay would be the last, and my partner and I put every dime we had down on this house, and it is taking a half of my pension just to pay the mortgage. And to think that I might not even be able to live here in ten years, five years, whenever this thing starts up, because as soon as it starts, the problem will start. You know? A little fire, a big fire, a little lithium battery explosion, a big lithium battery explosion, doesn't really make any difference. It all creates the same damage. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment's still open. Anybody else for public comment? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Laura Lee Waldorf, and I just have a question for everybody. I'm not sure how your city works or anything. I'm not from the city. But the city where I'm from, there's a thing that the city manager runs the city council and the mayor, and the mayor really doesn't do the work, is sort of a prop, but the city manager is part of the League of Cities. And the League of Cities has a narrative for the different cities to go into because they coach city council people and mayors, which is great. But what I see them doing is giving the power away from the people because they're taking it away from the council and the mayor and giving it to the city attorney and the city manager. So when things need to go onto the agenda, I'm not sure how it works here, but it should be up to the mayor and the city council to get it on the agenda. But where I come from, the city manager is the deciding factor. So the selected, who are paid and hired, are telling the elected, who we people elect, what to do. And it passes by the council and the mayor, but the mayors that are there aren't really qualified, so they look to the city manager and the city attorney for information, recommendations, but they really don't think for themselves. Because the League of Cities is part of the problem in a third of the cities in our country because there's a thing called CalPERS, which is a retirement situation for anybody who works for the cities or the counties or anything, great insurance program for pensions and things like that. And what they're doing is, in my city, they're taking parking, everything they possibly can, they're clawing their way by charging the public for things that they are paying back so make sure that they have good pension, because CalPERS had a 40% drop in their stock, so they have to replace that so then they have the pension that they're working for right now. So I don't know if that goes on here, but you might want to check out the League of Cities. There's the League of Cities of California and all the other states, but there's only a third of them right now. But if they really have a narrative of democracy plus socialism equals communism. And that's what I see if the paid people, not the elected people, which get paid, but they're doing it out of the passion of their heart, they don't get the choices. So the people don't get anything of the agenda in my city that they care about. The only things that get on the agenda in my city is fancy things to make it look pretty, but there's really serious issues going on underneath the belly of that city, and the public doesn't understand.
Thank you.
So that was my investigation. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. And any other public comment? Welcome.
My name is Franklin, and I've been around here for 45 years, and there is always various favorite aspects of the area. The postcard beauty, the waves to surf on, bay to paddle in. But when my grandson went to Morro Bay High School, I saw something wonderful. It is one of the best public high schools in the state, if not the country. And to put this thing somehow or other, somebody did not do due diligence, it's called due diligence, to check out, because there were reports from 2019, 2017, about lithium battery fires and these things. And I just hope that from now on, you all do due diligence before you approve or even consider this thing put on by the Texans, who are approaching, who hate California. So let's keep it safe for the children. It's the best high school going. We are so fortunate. It's not seen by tourists, it's not made postcards, but it is a great school. I don't know how many of you have had children or grandchildren going through there, but they can tell you how really nice it is. Water pool, arts, music, wow, it's great. Okay, you guys, please turn down that, whatever that thing you guys bother into without due diligence.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Well, Betty, welcome. My goodness.
My name is Betty Winholz, and I'm truly humbled. There are so many eloquent people speaking tonight, and of all backgrounds and ages, I'm just, I say yes to all of them except for one. Ms. Merrill. I'm going to actually talk on a different subject, and it has to do with the old B of A building, because I agree with all that's been said, but I'm concerned about the B of A building and what supposedly Scott scouts coffee. It's starting to look derelict, and it's not looking good, and I know that the city is renting the parking lot, but the building itself is, you know, someone broke the glass, there's a big piece of wood up there. It's really looking unbecoming, and I'm wondering to what extent the city can have some influence over the owner to get something that's an eyesore, and I think there is a code thing that can be used there, and I'm asking you to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. Anybody else? Oh, yes. Welcome. I think it's Nancy. Hi, Nancy, welcome.
Hi, Council Mayor. Mine's about Vistra, too, so you have to listen. As I sat listening to the consultant hired by Vistra at the first public meeting about the battery storage, I was struck by the time and money involved in their presentation that seemed like just the frosting on the cake of a project that had all the appearance of having already been approved by the city council. In the room, crowded with people, it appeared not one person wanted the lithium battery storage here. When and what were the terms the council agreed to that gave Vistra the confidence their lithium battery storage would be built in Morro Bay prior to any public discussion? Whatever the council told Vistra, it signaled Vistra could begin to hire consultants like Rincon to pursue the process of permitting and constructing a dangerous battery storage in the middle of a thriving tourist town on the California coastline, some of the most valuable property in the country. Whatever the city will gain in revenue will be exceeded by the devalued property of the residents, and that's if there's no fires. It's clear the residents do not want this lithium battery storage in Morro Bay. It is totally irrational to place it in this town. The mayor and council must abide by the wishes of the community and stop Vistra from going forward. Maybe you haven't heard about that dive boat that caught on fire because of the lithium batteries in Ventura. Everybody below decks died. They couldn't get out. I don't want to leave my house because of lithium batteries. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Public comment is still open. Anybody else? Okay. AGP, do we have anybody online calling in that would like to give public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two raised hands in the queue.
All right.
The first one is from Linda.
Okay, welcome, Linda.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Linda Donnelly, Morro Bay. So last Tuesday, friend and I were driving, taking a drive up to Capitola, and then in the middle of that drive, we got a notice from my husband that said that there had been this fire breakout in Moss Landing, and so we were rerouted. The traffic was horrendous, coming and going. I can't even imagine if something like this were to happen on the, on the Embarcadero. Can you imagine, right? Everybody, I agree with everybody in the room who spoke, also except for one. And you have, so they got eight-hour delay notice? It happened in the middle of the night. The map that showed on Nextdoor that showed that if this were to happen in our town, the affected area would be from Dog Beach all the way to Baywood Park. And the local news up there did show that there was a fire, so I don't know what this gentleman was saying and referring to. I don't know why they can't seek other grids. I know that they want to put it here because Vistra has a grid from PG&E, but, you know, so does Diablo. This has been brought up many times, at least the people that talk amongst themselves about how we don't want this here. And that's what I said to the people at the table at the public meeting last week, said, "No, no, no, we don't want it here." None of us did. The people in the affected area in Moss Landing and around there were locked down for 24 hours. That's what I read in the paper online. So if you're supposed to shut all the windows, lock yourself inside your home, and, you know, because of the terrible air, the gases, the noxious gases that the batteries are giving off, we don't have homes that are like sealed airtight. Some of us live in, you know, homes that have been, were former fisherman cabins, you know? I can't even imagine if the Embarcadero were filled with tourists, how would we get out? How would, how would they get out? Have this been thought of long-term? And I asked someone to, I concur with the person who said, there's not been due diligence on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. AGP, do you have other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one more raised hand from Melanie Williams-Mahan.
Okay, welcome, Melanie.
Hi, Melanie Williams-Mahan here. I had this whole spiel about the battery storage, but so many residents before me spoke so eloquently, I just have a couple questions. You all up there are responsible for the health and safety of 10,000 citizens and innumerable tourists. Why in the world would Morro Bay's leadership think it's okay to risk all those souls with a project like this? We need more than substantial safety. Vistra is here to make money. Is the loss of any of our lives worth what Vistra is paying? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. AGP, is there any other public comment?
We had one more raised hand from a Carol Trisdale.
Okay, welcome, Carol.
Good evening, council members, and thank you very much for taking my call. I agree with everything that has been said, that people have come forward. We are the citizens of the city of Morro Bay. We entrusted you to make the right decisions for us, and how can you put a price on, shall we say, equity? And how can you put a price on, shall we say, equity into the city with the possibility of lives or animals, property being damaged? Please do not allow Vistra Energy Lithium Battery Storage to come here. I've been a resident here since 1995. My husband and I love our retirement years, and we want to see our grandchildren enjoy the same area, and hopefully not be compromised by potential disasters. We have enough with global warming out there, and thank you again for your time. And thank you, council members, for hearing my voice.
Thank you, Carol. AGP, do we have another public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no raised hands in the queue.
Okay. So we'll close general public comment, bring it back, make a couple of comments in general for the public's good. First, there was a lot of testimony this evening, obviously, regarding the battery, proposed best battery energy storage facility. And if you have something in writing you would like to email to the council, that would be very helpful for the record. It is on the record in terms of the tape, but again, I offer that to you. It's always good to have something in writing if you'd like to submit that now or at any time regarding this. Two, the city council and the planning commission has received nothing as of yet to consider. And so from a legal standpoint, I just need to say your council is not going to respond to your concerns. What we have is a private property owner that has proposed a project that is going through the usual process. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Graham to comment on that so that you understand what that process is. That would also include, once the process he describes is completed, a number of public hearings at the planning commission. And then after the planning commission would review it, it would come to the city council to be reviewed based upon recommendations made by them and the input that we take from the public. And so I just wanted to just make sure that you understood where we were with regard to that. We're in no position to make a decision. We don't have the information. But Mr. Graham, if you could just very briefly outline what the process is for the public so that they understand it.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. You know, as you stated, Vistra submitted an application to the city for a battery energy storage system project. That project has undergone review for completeness, meaning do they have a complete application for processing? And that process has entered the environmental review phase. What the environmental review phase means is that we are in the process, for this project, of preparing an environmental impact report, and the background studies to support that effort are underway. So we are getting background studies related to geology, flooding, you know, earthquakes, all those types of things, biology, environmentally sensitive habitat, all those types of studies are coming in to inform the process. And we're, we have about half of those in right now, and we're, and those processes, studies are being finalized and will be posted on the current projects page for the project. So you can view that on the current projects page under the planning division's portion of the website. And you can note, and you can sign up for notify me on the city's website for the Vistra battery project. And anytime we update the website, or we have meetings on the project, or we have workshops, or any of those types of things, then you would be notified of those events. So the next, I think, opportunity for the, for the community to weigh in, in the, in the overall process for the battery project would be when the draft environmental impact report is released for comment. It'll be released for a 45-day period, and then comments will be received during that timeframe, and then they will be responded to in the environmental impact report that comes before the planning commission and subsequently city council for review. The timeframe for that, as far as the public hearings go, as we stand right now, is probably in the spring or summer of next year. That's kind of where we're at in the process right now. The draft environmental impact report may end up coming out towards the end of this year for the 45-day review period, but I don't, I don't envision us going to public hearings until, until the beginning of next year, or all the way up to this summer.
Thank you for that. And is everybody familiar with, or can we clarify, the notify me? Maybe you could, could again clarify that so that people could get notified as to when a public comment or comments can be accepted and what the process is.
Sure. On the front page of the city's website, on the left-hand side, there is a notify me link that you can click on, and you can sign up to be notified for, you can receive agendas for all of the city's advisory bodies and the city council. And you can sign up for particular projects to get notified for, and we have, we have several projects that are in the queue that allow you to sign up for those. The Vistra battery project is one of them. If you do sign up for them and put your email address in there, then you'll be notified again when we update the website with new information and/or we schedule meetings and those types of things.
And I want to thank everybody for coming out. You're welcome to come out at any time and give input on, on the proposed project, although again, it's not reached the city council. But please feel free, I do appreciate all the information that everybody's given. I took extensive notes, and of course, everything is taped, and we have a tape to be able to review. Again, I want to remind you that written comments are really great. I know sometimes it's, it's difficult to get everything down in writing, but if you'd like to submit it for the record as either an email or a letter directly to the city clerk at any time, we keep that for public comment. So again, all of you that spoke to that project, I really appreciate you being here and speaking to that. I wanted to, if we could, just, Betty asked a question about the Bank of America, and was it the wood-covered window, I think I took as a note? Just a little comment on where that's at?
Sure. It's interesting, the city manager and myself were discussing the project today. They are in plan check right now, meaning they're in building plan check to get their building permit, so they're eager to get moving on the remodel of that property. Certainly, we can, you know, if that starts dragging on, we can engage them to have them, you know, take a look at the property to have it cleaned up. I mean, I haven't gone over there recently to take a look at it, but given Betty's comments, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to item A, our consent agenda, item A1 through A7. And I'll go ahead and open public comment for our consent agenda. This is public comment for consent items only this evening. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak to our consent item? Betty, yes, welcome.
I'd like to, Betty Winholz again, I'd like to speak to A5, which has to do with the IWMA, and the idea that you're signing a contract for only six months that can be extended twice. It said that part of the issue had to do with staffing, and I'm confused about that because usually when you go on Saturday, the staffing is, are not city employees. And so I'm not sure why, other than maybe that you're gonna tear down the plant, that I don't, I don't understand why this site is gonna be compromised within the next six months. And maybe you could explain that? And will they find us a location before we lose the site? Because I know people from all along the coast come to our site because we're the only one.
Thank you. Public comment's open for the consent agenda. Any other members of the public?
Oh, why not?
Terry, welcome back.
Hi, I'd just like to make a general comment about consent agendas in general. What I spoke to earlier was a consent agenda item from back in August. I think the city might want to be a little more sensitive about the types of consent items that you actually put on your consent agenda. I think that the particular item that I had here was about 140 pages long. It seems to me that when a staff report is that long, that unless it's something pretty ministerial, and maybe signing a master plan and all these addendums to EIRs is ministerial in, on its face, it seems to me, as evidenced by the number of people that showed up here tonight, that maybe that might have been thought about as a public hearing item rather than a consent agenda item. I read your agenda pretty routinely, and I missed this, quite frankly, until this last week. So anyway, think about your consent agenda going forward, and maybe some of these high-profile items need to be, not pulled by the council, but put on as hearing items from the very get-go. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Public comment's still open on consent. Anybody else? Looks like not. AGP, do you have any consent phone calls?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no raised hands in the queue.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council. I'll go ahead and pull A5 and then ask that we address Ms. Winholz's question regarding that. Any other items to pull? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda except for A5.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda except for A5.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve all consent items except for A5. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and do a rule call vote on that first.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And Mr. Collins, did you want to take a stab at A5 and the issue raised?
Yeah, and the issue is being able to open and close the facility. And so we have utility staff that are there and have been there for years who will be moved up to the new water reclamation facility site. So that's what's creating the issue. We're gonna be able to do it for a short period of time while we seek to address the longer-term issue by using maintenance staff, but that, they're basically gonna be pulled off of their regular scheduled duties to open and close. So that's, that's the genesis of this. And also, the point raised by the constituent is also valid in that there's a teardown plan for that entire site, and so, you know, that's being factored in as well. So six months, hopefully it gets us to the answer, may not. That's, we have the ability to extend further if necessary. Thanks.
Thanks for that. I'll go ahead and move approval of A5.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on A5? Yes. Councilmember Heller, please.
Yeah, so Scott, a couple of questions about that. So is it definitely being moved to the new WRF location?
No, not, not planned for that at this time. So that's, that's the conundrum.
Still, okay. And then in terms of staff time, I think it's opening and closing the gate, right? Because the facility, as I understand it, is staffed by the recycled people.
Yeah, I think it's primarily that, but there may be other components, and Greg's not here.
Yeah.
And Eric, Eric Riddo, city engineer, may know, but I have a feeling that's more of a nuanced thing. So I don't know, Eric, if you have anything to add to that.
Just that, yeah, there are staff that may be doing other duties, and they would have to be pulled from those, being that currently the public work staff that are working are probably doing maintenance duties around the city, and they would have to coordinate and arrive at the gate and do that work. It wouldn't necessarily add hours, but they would be pulled from other duties that they're doing. So it's something that we can probably figure out in the next six months.
Okay, and then the term of the lease has to do with, not sure where it's gonna land? Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we do have a motion and a second to approve A5, and we'll do a rule call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Looks like we have a couple of requests for a public health break, so we'll take five minutes, 7:13, about 7:18. We will be back, folks. Thank you. Testing? Ah, great. We are back. And we are live. Welcome back. We are on item, first business item this evening is C-1. This is an establishment of a PARZ Post-Employment Benefits Trust program to pre-fund pension and retiree and retiree healthcare obligations. And I will turn it over to Ms. Johnson-Rios, our esteemed Assistant City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you just stated the item before you this evening, I will give you a brief introduction about how we got to this point, and then I'll hand it over to Rachel Sanders, Senior Manager at PARZ, which is the Recommended Trust Administrator. And she'll present in a bit more detail with a slide deck how the trust would work. We also have Tony, Tori Malazo, Investment Executive at Highmark Capital, on the line tonight if there are any questions about the investment side of this. So by way of background, as you may recall, we've been discussing this in some forums since about last November, when the City Council held its Goals Session, and you identified fiscal sustainability and economic vitality as one of your top five goals, specifically asking that we create a plan to address the city's unfunded liabilities as one of your action items. And if you recall, we brought onboard NHA Advisors, which is an advisory company, to help walk Council and CFAC through this process. We explored various policy options to address the pension liability, and Council-directed staff to also create a policy framework in the form of a pension reserve policy to guide the investment of these funds in a trust back in April. Finally, you took action in June to appropriate just over $1 million to cede this type of a trust with its initial funding. So thank you for all of that background work. And most recently, we formed a selection committee to evaluate the fairly limited number of Section 115 Pension Trust Providers. That selection committee included Mayor Heding, Mayor Pro Tem Barton, and a CFAC, Citizens' Finance Advisory Committee member, Homer Alexander, as well as the City Manager and myself. We evaluated all of the available options on the market, interviewed the two companies that would have been viable options for a city the size of Morro Bay, and the selection committee unanimously recommended PARZ as the Pension Trust Administrator. There are several reasons that PARZ was selected, which are outlined in your staff report in more detail. And PARZ has partnered with US Bank to serve as the trustee for the Pension Trust Funds, and with its sub-advisor, Highmark Capital, to provide investment management services for the program. The selection committee, as part of the review process, also reviewed Highmark's investment options and discussed the city's goals for these funds, and recommends a selection of the initial portfolio investment allocations, also is outlined in your staff report, to the Capital Appreciation Highmark Plus account for the OPEB trust, and the Balanced Highmark Plus account for the Pension Trust. You'll learn more about these in the slides to come. And just taking a step back and reminding Council and the community what benefits this trust will bring to the city. Briefly, it will provide a dedicated savings account to address the city's unfunded pension liability, which stood at about $27 million at the end of fiscal year 2021. And unfortunately, that number is expected to grow because of CalPERS's losses in the market in fiscal year 2122. So that liability, despite the city making minimum payments, will grow to over $30 million in the next few years. So this type of a trust allows us to essentially establish a dedicated savings account to start putting money away to address that unfunded liability. It offers investment flexibility under IRS codes that are not offered to cities in other funding situations. So it gives us a bit more flexibility in trying to, to essentially invest in options that will make the city more money to put towards the unfunded liability over the long term. It also diversifies our risk a bit, because we're putting some of our assets with another entity other than CalPERS. But it does not preclude the city from making additional payments to CalPERS in addition to putting money into the trust if the city would like to do that in the future. And finally, it also serves as a bit of an insurance policy in the sense that it is a pension reserve that can be used during times of fiscal constraints or budgetary constraints to actually fund the minimum payment in a given year. So these funds are statutorily restricted to only be used for pension liabilities, and it's up to the city when we use them for pension liabilities. We can use them, save them up for 10 years or more, and use them to make one big lump sum payment at the end. And/or we can use them to make annual payments, or a portion of an annual payment during lean budget times if needed. So it really provides a lot of flexibility in that regard. And the final note I'd like to make tonight is that the city has taken a very similar action before with the city's OPEB liabilities, and that stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. That pays for retiree healthcare for employees who are eligible for that, for a small portion of their healthcare costs. That liability is much smaller, it's around $2 million. But as a result of the city setting up a restricted OPEB trust about 10 years ago, that liability is essentially fully funded today. So it's the same type of mechanism, it's the same type of legal restriction that is placed on these funds to what the city has already done with OPEB. So part of tonight's recommendation is to create a pension trust on the pension side, and then also to move the existing OPEB trust into PARZ's trust administration program as well, because that will provide lower fees and reduced administrative burden over time. And I'll be available after to answer any questions, but I'd like to go ahead and hand it over to Rachel Sanders, who has a more detailed presentation for you. And she's joining us remotely, so let's see.
Rachel, can you hear us okay?
Yes, hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to join you virtually tonight. I wish I could have been there in person, but certainly appreciate being able to connect either way. And I do have a brief presentation that I wanted to share with everyone, so I believe that that might be coming up on the screen here.
It's coming up, Rachel. And if you just want to let our city clerk know when to advance the slides for you, she will do that.
Yes, I'll be happy to do that. Thank you very much. And while that is coming up onto the screen, I know Sarah mentioned that Tori Malazo from Highmark Capital Management is also joining me this evening. He is the Dedicated Portfolio Manager for the city, and so he will also be happy to answer any investment-specific questions that Council may have. So seeing that the presentation is on the screen, we can go ahead and get started here. There's the contact information for Tori and myself, and we'll go to the next slide. Thank you. Okay, so Sarah did a wonderful overview and introduction of the PARZ team, so I'll briefly touch on this page. As Sarah mentioned, there are three different companies involved in the PARZ 115 Trust Program. PARZ that you'll see there at the top is the Trust Administrator and Consultant. And so, just for a little bit of background for the Council, I will point out that PARZ is actually the pioneer of 115 Trust Programs for a multiple employer basis. So PARZ was actually the first company to do an OPEB Multiple Employer Trust. And then in 2015, we actually created a combination trust to also allow pension pre-funding. So we have a lot of experience specifically in the 115 Trust realm. And as far as our services go to the city, not only do we help the city establish the trust with all the necessary legal documents, we do all of the ongoing administration, meaning that we monitor monies coming in and out of the trust, will help facilitate any contributions or disbursements necessary, and of course, will coordinate any ongoing meetings and reports and presentations that might be needed as well. So some things that PARZ does not do, number one, we don't actually hold any of the assets in the trust. That responsibility falls to our trustee, US Bank, at the bottom left there. They provide the oversight protection as planned fiduciary, and do serve as custodian of the assets. And last but certainly not least, I mentioned Tori Malazo with us. He is from Highmark Capital Management. They are the investment sub-advisor to our trustee, US Bank. So we've worked with the committee, as Sarah mentioned, on talking through those different investment options. And Tori and the Highmark team do invest specifically for our 115 Trust clients, so we will add some additional color to those investments as we move forward. One quick note I did want to make on this slide. It's been in the news somewhat recently, so want to point this out for those that may have heard. There's currently an acquisition going on between US Bank and Union Bank. And I do want to point out that Highmark is a subsidiary of Union Bank who is being acquired by US Bank. So although there are two separate boxes on your slide right now, it could be that in the future when we see you, they become one box. Highmark will be under the US Bank umbrella. However, they are still going to be operating in the same capacity as they are right now, serving our PARZ clients and investing the funds on your behalf. So we don't expect any changes. I did just want to make that one note for future presentations. All right, we'll go to the next slide. Please, perfect. So this is the structure of our Combination 115 Trust. So this trust is IRS-approved, and it allows for the city to pre-fund its pension and its OPEB liabilities within the same 115 Trust structure. So both liabilities are accounted for completely separate from one another. So anything going into the pension account could be withdrawn for pension-related costs. Similarly, anything set aside for OPEB could only come out for those retiring medical costs. But as Sarah pointed out, you do have the efficiency of having one trust and one service provider. And as we'll talk about, you can actually invest the funds differently as well, because they are accounted for separately. So for the large portion of this presentation, I'm going to really focus on pension pre-funding, since the city has already funded its OPEB. But at the very end, I'll touch back on the OPEB side of things, just to again clarify why the recommendation is being made to move the OPEB assets into this trust as well. All right, next slide, please. Thank you. A little bit of background on pensions. So, you know, there's been a lot of changes that have been made at CalPERS that have really impacted public agencies across the state. And one of those biggest changes has certainly been a change to the discount rate with CalPERS. As I'm sure most of you know, there was a pretty significant lowering of the discount rate back in 2016. It went from 7.5% down to 7%. Most recently, last November, the Board voted to further reduce the discount rate down to 6.8%. And that was actually triggered through their risk mitigation policy, because they got such wonderful returns, over 21% last fiscal year. As Sarah noted, though, unfortunately, for fiscal, for this most recent fiscal year, they do have a negative return. But again, agencies are sort of at the whims of how CalPERS invests, and anytime they make changes, whether it's to the discount rate or potentially to their amortization periods, that really does have a significant impact on how much employer contributions have to be into their system. And so because of all these changes, again, public agencies across the states have found themselves looking for tools to address rising costs with CalPERS. And so on the next slide, we have your latest pension funding status. So again, I would say take this page with a grain of salt, because as Sarah mentioned, certainly things look better on this most recent valuation as of June 30th, 2021, versus what they did in June 30th of 2020. And that, again, was certainly helped by that 21% plus return that they did see at the end of fiscal year in 2021. So you can see that the city was over 78% funded as of 2021. But because this doesn't factor in their most recent negative returns, we would expect on future valuations to probably see a correction in the other way. And so again, there's always sort of a moving target with CalPERS. And certainly, when their investments do well, the city sees a benefit in terms of its funded status. But of course, things can go the other way, and with this volatile market, again, it'll be interesting to see if CalPERS can hit their now 6.8% target. But wanted to show you at least where you're at as of June 30th, 2021. Okay, next slide, please. So Sarah actually went over a number of these concepts, and so I'll briefly just kind of highlight some of the main reasons that we hear from other cities as to why they're choosing to utilize this 115 Trust Program as a tool to address those growing CalPERS liabilities. So I think first and foremost, the idea of having complete local control over assets really hits home with a lot of cities. You know, it used to be before, having a separate account that you could pre-fund these liabilities into, really a city's only option was to send additional discretionary payments into CalPERS. And we've talked with a number of agencies that sent money into CalPERS, addressed their liabilities in the short term, CalPERS made changes and their liabilities went right back up. And unfortunately, once you send money into CalPERS, you've lost all control of that money. They are going to invest it per their investment policy, and there's no getting that money back once you do send it into their pension program. So the beauty of this 115 Trust is that you have full discretion on when you set money aside, how much money you set aside, when you take that money out, and maybe most importantly, how you invest those funds. Because again, every agency is going to have different investment objectives, and rather than simply relying on CalPERS to invest your pension monies, you really do have a say in how you invest these pre-funded pension monies. The idea of pension rate stabilization, you know, the trend has been for the last number of years that employer costs have continued to rise, and you're expected to put more and more money into the CalPERS system. So having a dedicated fund at the city in the form of 115 Trust that you know you can tap into to help stabilize those future costs is certainly something that will help your budget long-term. And Sarah also made the point of being able to tap into these funds as a rainy day fund when needed. Certainly, if you find that your budget is impaired for whatever unforeseen reason in the future, certainly your pension costs are always going to be a large, ongoing part of your budget, and being able to draw down from the trust when you need to to pay CalPERS is some peace of mind that you can get from this program as well. And then last but not least, diversification. So we see this is diversifying in two separate ways. As Sarah pointed out, number one, you're able to diversify outside of your general fund by investing in equities, which you cannot do in your general fund. That gives you the opportunity to earn a greater rate of return over time versus simply having those monies earmarked in the general fund. And it's also diversification outside of CalPERS. It's the concept of not putting all your eggs in one basket, the basket being CalPERS. Again, you get to choose the level of risk you want to take, and Highmark Capital Management is investing these funds rather than the CalPERS Board. Okay, next slide, please. Perfect. So speaking of Highmark Capital Management, these are the investment returns as of June 30th, 2022. And again, we do have Tori on the line for any investment-specific questions, but I'll quickly just show this as an overview before we get to questions. So I think, you know, anyone who's an investor knows that the one-year numbers as of June 30th, 2022 were pretty ugly. So, you know, really the intent of these 115 Trust Programs is to set money aside for longer than a year, again, with the goal of getting a greater rate of return than you could otherwise get in your general fund. So focusing on those, you know, three, five, and 10 years, you can certainly see the advantage to the types of returns that you could get from this program versus that money just sitting in your general fund, which, in speaking to a lot of cities, has been returning less than 1% in many cases. And so, based on the risk tolerance of the city, again, five different options that were specifically customized for these 115 Trust Programs. I will note that for OPEB, the city has selected the Capital Appreciation Strategy. That is the highest level of equity that Highmark offers. It has about 75% in stocks. And then what was chosen for the pension strategy is one notch down from that. That is our balanced strategy, which has about 60% in stocks. And so, a little bit more conservative on pension, perhaps the driving factor there being the time horizon, with maybe a longer outlook for OPEB versus pension, which is very typical from what we see for other cities investing in this as well. I will also note that, of course, the city is not locked into these selections, so if at any point in time there's a desire to make a change, the city certainly has that flexibility. Okay, next slide, please. Perfect. So this slide goes over our program fees. We are fully transparent in terms of what the costs are for this program. All of the costs are based on assets within the trust. So at the starting point that the city is going to begin ceding the trust, the PARZ fees would be 0.25% of total assets. If assets were to grow larger, you can see that that fee will go down over time. Similarly, with US Bank and Highmark, their fees are combined, and at the current level of assets that the city is starting at, their fees are 0.35% and can only decrease from there as assets grow. So all in, the most that the city would ever be paying is 0.6, or 60 basis points percent of assets. And that is all discharged on this trust. So there are no fees to get the trust set up, no minimum manual fees, no trading or transaction fees, again, no cost-of-change investments. Those 60 basis points or 0.6% are all that would be charged based on assets. Okay, next slide, please. Perfect. And then this slide goes over some of the benefits. And then this slide goes over some of the benefits in considering moving monies from the current OPEB account into this 115 trust. So again, Sarah did a great job of highlighting some of the advantages. Ultimately, because this trust is set up as a combination trust, you get the benefit of having the same trust team in place that you do for pension. So both Tori and myself would also service you on the OPEB side of the house. So anytime you'd get statements, it would have a pension line item as well as an OPEB line item. And in addition to that, you would again get presentations on both your OPEB and your pension plan activity. And so apart from the efficiencies that you get, you also get the benefit of having those assets in both accounts aggregate for fee purposes. So again, when I was showing you that slide and scale of fees, that is inclusive of assets in both accounts. So you could certainly see the advantages assets grow in both, that you could potentially get larger fee breaks. So those were the main points that I wanted to make. And then last but not least, we just have an overview on what the implementation looks like if the city decides to move forward with this plan. The very last slide. Perfect. So ultimately, this is a very streamlined process to get set up. And we've been fortunate enough to work with the committee members to get a sense of what they're looking for in terms of investments and other feedback on contributions. So at this point, if the council decided to vote to approve the trust, we would send to the city all of the signature-ready documents to execute. We've had an investment conversation, as I mentioned, and that's part of what the staff would complete in those documents. Once we have all of those executed documents returned to our office, we typically have the account set up within about a week. And so once that account is open, we will again alert staff. And we will let them know that the account is ready to accept contributions at that point in time, send over all those instructions. And then once everything is set up, we do have a policy to meet with all of our member agencies, at least annually. So we do an annual check-in, where both Tori and myself would come out, review the plan, talk about investment performance. But of course, we do have cities that like to meet more than annually. And if that's the case for Moro Bay, we would be happy to meet with you any time of year. We've certainly been asked to do ad hoc reports, come out and do council meetings off-cycle. And so our goal at PARs and Highmark is really to service this, you know, to the needs of each individual city that we work with. So we look forward to working with you to help you meet your goals. And we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Very much appreciate the presentation, Sarah.
I don't have anything to add at this point, but happy to answer questions.
Okay, great. And Sarah, thank you for the high-level overview. Very much appreciated. And the very clear staff report, thanks for that. And Rachel, thank you for the presentation again. And I'll go ahead and open it up for any questions from council. Let's start with Councilmember Ford. I think she's still out there in Zoom land. Did you have any questions? Yes, did you have any questions, Councilmember Ford?
I have a couple, thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
One of my questions is, it was actually just mentioned about reviewing, you know, possibly annually, whatnot with you. And you mentioned the ad hoc committee. So I guess the question, I don't know who this question is for, but would that be the same selection committee that was a part of the original selection of the trust? Or is that a different committee that would have to be appointed? Or is, you know, how does that work? It's my first question.
So from a council perspective, no. That was, the assignment was for Councilmember Barton and I, along with Mr. Alexander from CFAC, to be the individuals involved in making the recommendation for what you heard tonight. But no, that presentation, I would assume, would go to our Finance Director, Assistant City Manager, and then be brought to the full city council. Correct, Sarah, is that what you?
We could structure that. If council wants to provide direction on that, you certainly can. As a comparison point, the OPEB trust, the data for that went to staff. And then it's reported on annually in the ACFER. So that is probably the most logical time to go over that information with council, unless you'd like a separate process.
Great question. Did you have another question, Councilmember Ford? You're muted, perhaps?
Sorry.
That's okay.
So my other question is, well, I guess it would be for the selection committee, for you, Mayor, and for Councilmember Barton. When discussing, I mean, there's, in this report, there's so many positive things like local control, pension rate stabilization, rainy day fund, diversification. All of that's amazing. Was there anything that came up that was a concern during this decision process?
I won't answer for Councilmember Barton. I'll let her. The one thing that stands out for me, which would be, I don't know if they're paginated, but I believe slide number eight. The strategy becomes very important, because they involve different risk corridors. The highest risk, if you look at it because of the fact that it's higher in equities, would be the capital appreciation account. The lowest would be the conservative account. But then again, the conservative account has the lowest return. And the highest return would be the capital appreciation. And so the only concern I had was that that needs to be watched fairly closely. And we do have the flexibility of making adjustments in that choice. And so if there are negative returns that are consistent for a long period of time, we can move it to other strategies. And Councilmember Barton, I'll let you answer for yourself.
I was so impressed during the course of the interviews that we held with the two different groups about what was a stronger proposal, what was, what I thought would be the most helpful to our staff. I just was very much impressed with PARs' presentation. And so now, and seeing it again tonight, it gives me that, a chance to look at it again and think about that this was definitely the right choice for the city and for our going forward. So, that's it.
Thank you both so much for answering that. And I just, I just want to thank you, along with Alexander, Homer Alexander, and our staff, and all who worked on this. So yeah, I don't have any other questions, any other questions, thank you.
Okay, great. Councilmember Addis, any questions?
I don't have any questions, Mayor. Just a comment that I'm really glad to see this come forward before the end of my term on council, because we've talked about the PERS obligation for a long time and trying to solve it. And so I'm happy that one of the actionable ideas we're taking action on. And it's been very thoughtful and appreciate staff time and the ad hoc committee. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And Councilmember Heller, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is certainly a timely issue to bring before us. And thank you for working on this and putting it together. Couple of questions, and maybe I spaced out and didn't hear this, but who will be or what committee will be making the investment decisions?
So council would make the initial investment decisions tonight. And then the plan administrator would be the city manager. The city manager, under the contract, would have the ability to change the investment portfolio options. But again, that's something that council could provide direction on. If council wanted all of those, any changes to come to council as needed, we could certainly do that.
Okay. And then my other question is, what dollar amounts are we talking about over the next few years in terms of assets under management?
It's a great question. So currently, we would see the trust with the, it's a million and 60,000. That was budgeted in 2223. And then under the pension reserve policy that council approved in April, we would be looking at the operating surplus in the general fund at the end of each fiscal year. And the baseline recommendation would be to appropriate one-third of that surplus to this trust. That decision would also come before council every year in the budget process. So if a deviation from the baseline or the policy were desired in a given year, then council could so direct.
Okay. And then my last question is, I know our previous discussions about there's some pretty dire in terms of the timeline in getting these pension liabilities paid off. And this is not really a fair question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Does this give us some hope that at some point in time, we will actually get them paid off? Or is this going to shorten the timeline? Or what do you think about that?
I think that depends on how much we can afford to allocate to the trust over the coming years. But certainly, even small allocations to the trust will help incrementally with the city's ability to address the larger number. And of course, it'll also depend on PERS', CalPERS' performance over the coming decades. It will depend on demographics and a number of factors that go into the actuarial reports that determine our contributions.
Sure. And I thought of one more question while you were talking. What is the dollar amount that we're targeting right now for our general fund emergency reserve? Note the percentage.
The general fund reserve currently across all funds, including the sort of sub-general funds, is $8.6 million. And so that has met the 33% target and exceeded it if you include the, all of the other funds. So I think if you just look at the general fund specifically, it's around the $5 to $6 million target for the 33% of operating expenditures.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Those are my questions.
Good questions. And Councilmember Barton, did you have any further questions? Okay. Here we know further questions. I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C-1 on our agenda. And welcome back, Betty.
Thank you, Betty Winholtz. It seems to me that the reason that we're moving to this change is so we can invest in more risky investments, like you were showing that we can do more in stock markets at that higher rate. I want to say that I'm a little surprised that you wouldn't kind of come in at the middle, rather than jump to the top in the first year anyways, just to see how it went. So I just want to make that comment. I'm not sure I understand this comment in the staff report that says that the investments are tailored to our demographics. And I'm wondering what the word demographics is referring to here. Certainly not our city, but maybe to our financial status as a city. So I would like to know what that means. The need for flexibility of access, again, I'm not sure why we need flexibility in access, because it's supposed to be put aside for this retirement. And if we have access to it and we spend it, that doesn't seem like a wise idea, even though it says we can in emergency situations. And so I'm wondering, what is the benefit of moving? Well, I think I just won't ask that question. Are there charges in terms of leaving the current fund that we're with and going to these new funds? Is there a charge changing businesses? I'm curious why the city manager is the financial officer instead of our financial officer being the designated person? And then am I understanding what I just heard in terms of the question that was asked, that if, if a third of our reserve is being put into the investment, then our reserve only has 20%, not the 30% that was required under the rule that you guys made, you being, sorry, the city council made. So are we really only in our reserve having 20% of, I mean, what would that be, 60%? Or 70% of our 8 million is in our reserves? Because there's 30% of that is in the investment. And supposedly, we wouldn't touch that unless we had to. Ask that question. Are there penalties for taking it out for the rainy day? I noticed that there was a rainy day clause there. And is there penalties for that? And she did offer us how much it's going to charge us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Public comment is still open. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none. AGP, do we have any members of the public on the phone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no raised hands in the queue.
Okay, thanks. I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council. Sarah, I wrote them down. Do you want to answer them, or do you need me to repeat them?
I took notes, I think I got them. Thank you for the good questions, Ms. Winholtz. The risk portfolio decision, I don't want to speak on behalf of the whole selection committee, but that was recommended because of the anticipated time horizon of needing or not needing to take out the funds. So with the OPEB fund, I think the recommendation to come in in the capital appreciation portfolio was because we did not anticipate needing to take any funds out of the OPEB account in the foreseeable future. In fact, we're currently paying on a pay-go basis for those costs which are under $100,000 a year. So the hope would be to leave the funds there and have them appreciate as much as possible. On the PERS side, I'm sorry, the pension side, the goal would be the same. But the city's ability to do that may be a bit more uncertain, just given the volume of the required minimum annual payments. Currently, we're paying approximately $3.5 million to PERS between the UAL payment and the normal pension costs annually. So I think that that was the reason for the selection committee's recommendation, that it come in balanced and not at the capital appreciation level. But also invite other members of the committee to speak to that. The reference to tailored to the city's demographics is really speaking more to the demographics of our obligations, not the community's demographics. So the factors that I just outlined, about how many participants we have, when our obligations will come due, when we think that we'll need to use the funds, we can tailor our investment selections accordingly. The flexibility of access, if I understood the question correctly, just refers to when we can take out funds out of either account. So again, these are required under IRS code to be used exclusively for either OPEB or pension costs. So whenever they're removed, they're only, they can only be used for those purposes. But we can access them if we need to, to pay current liabilities. So we could access them instead of using general fund dollars, for example, to pay for retiree health costs on the OPEB side. Or we could use them from the pension trust side to pay for normal PERS costs in a fiscally constrained year. That's not the goal, but that's just one additional benefit of having this type of trust established. Next question, I think, was, is there a charge to change to move the OPEB funds from one trust administrator to another? And no, there's not. The question on the plan administrator, being the city manager versus the, excuse me, the admin services director, that's a discretionary choice, that it could be either a person. And we just talked with PARs about what the majority of cities do. And the majority of cities do have their city managers as the plan administrator, but that's a decision for city council. Let me see. The reserve, we are not taking from the 33% reserve. So we still have at least a 33% reserve in the city's coffers that's not being put into the pension trust. And that was built into the pension reserve policy. So it's looking at one-third of the prior year's operating surplus as long as that 33% reserve minimum is met. So this would be on top of holding that reserve. And then are there penalties for removing funds? I may have misnoted that. But no, I don't believe so. Oh, for taking out for the rainy day, correct. There are no penalties. We can basically direct PARs as our trust administrator when we want them to send payments to PERS on our behalf.
Great, you captured everyone that I had. Good questions, by the way, Ms. Winholtz. I appreciate that very much. Again, I want to thank Mr. Alexander from CFAC, our Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, Councilmember Barton, and especially Sarah and her staff, and Mr. Collins for working with us on this. Thanks to Rachel from PARs and Tori from Highmark Capital for your education and your assistance in this. Highmark Capital for your education and your assistance in this. For me, this is another tool in the toolkit to address this looming huge CalPERS liability, which at the end of last fiscal year was 27.1 million, given the performance of everybody's 201K this year. My sense is, it's gonna be much higher in terms of a liability, and, and this tool is absolutely necessary for us. It is basically a dedicated savings account that, that can be utilized for other things if there's need in an emergency basis. It has that kind of flexibility. In my opinion, it produces higher returns if managed appropriately and correctly, and diversifies our risk across all the other products that we use within the city, which, which have included, you know, side payments or prepayments that we've done in the past, employee contribution changes to their CalPERS payment, and also the tiered system that was implemented a number of years ago by prior councils. And so this also has the ability to be actively managed. In other words, the Highmark Capital Company actively manages the fund and is, is managing it basically on a daily basis to, to look at market performance and make decisions, not global decisions, but within the context of what strategy that has been looked at by the city and chosen by the city. The, the OPEB money, the rationale for capital appreciation was the fact that that is fully funded and is basically not going to be needed, most likely, for a long time. And so we felt comfortable making that recommendation, not as comfortable to have that kind of higher-risk product with our, our pension liability. Thusly, the committee selected the balanced strategy, which was pretty high-performing, but lower risk with regard to our pension funds. And given all of that, we feel it's, it's a great opportunity for the city, along with, you know, a large number of cities in California that have, and across the nation, that use Section 115 trust to set aside money for trying to deal with this looming cost that cities are, are just really fighting for. With that, I will recommend adoption of Resolution Number 8522, authorizing participation in the Pars Post-Employment Benefits Trust Program, to be administered by Public Agency Retirement Services, or PARs, and US Bank, appointing the city manager as the city's plan administrator, authorizing the city manager to execute the documents to implement the program, subject to the city attorney's review and approval, authorizing the city manager to take necessary actions to dissolve the current OPEB trust, and move funds to the Pars OPEB trust, and directing the city manager to select specified portfolios that I just discussed, for initial investments, and make changes if needed to continue to implement city fiscal goals.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second for staff recommendation. And any other comments? Councilmember Ford? Oh, sorry. Can't see your hand. Any comments?
No, other than just what I said earlier, I just appreciate the work that the committee or staff and others have, you know, have committed to, to making sure that this is the best decision for our city and for its future, and I just appreciate it. And so I'll be supporting it tonight.
Thanks. Councilmember Heller, sorry?
Thank you, Mayor. This obviously is a great opportunity, and it's coming to council at a very critical time, and I think it's an outstanding approach. I want to thank Sarah and Scott and the CFAC for, for bringing this forward. The only concern I have with this, and we have an outstanding city manager right now, is what happens when we have a different city manager who may not be as qualified as this one. I'm a little uncomfortable about the review of the choices made over time.
Yeah. And, and I think that's a, that's a fair point, and council has the, the opportunity, it's under our purview, to change that at any time, from a policy standpoint. So should there be a desire to change that, that could be brought back to the council and changed?
Okay, so Mr. Collins, can we get another 20 years out of you? That's what I'm looking for.
Twenty.
Can I get that in writing?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, then. Thank you.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Good. Thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate it. That brings us to our second business item, adoption of Resolution Number 8622, declaring the city's intention to approve California Public Employees Retirement System, or CalPERS, contract amendment, introducing for first reading of Ordinance Number 653, authorizing an amendment to the CalPERS contract to implement 2% cost sharing for local fire members in the Morro Bay Firefighters Association, IAFF, Local 3725. And I'll turn it over to Dana for presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. During the recent contract negotiations between the city and the Morro Bay Firefighters Association, an agreement was reached whereby members of the association would contribute 2% of their salary toward the city's cost of their retirement benefits. This is commonly referred to as cost sharing. Under the terms of that memorandum of understanding, which was adopted by the council on August 9, the cost sharing was retroactive back to July 1, 2022. The item before you will begin the process of amending the city's contract with CalPERS to memorialize that cost-sharing arrangement. Following tonight's action, should the council adopt the resolution and introduce the ordinance before you, members of the fire association will conduct a secret ballot vote to approve the cost-sharing arrangement. If a majority of the members approve that change, staff will bring back Ordinance 653 for adoption at the October 25 meeting, and the contract amendment with CalPERS will take effect November 25. Staff recommends the city council take the following actions: Adopt Resolution 862022, giving notice of the city's intention to approve an amendment with the contract with CalPERS, and introduce for first reading by title only with further reading waived; Ordinance Number 653, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City of Morro Bay and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System, implementing Section 20516, employees sharing additional cost for local fire members in the Morro Bay Firefighters Association, IAFF, Local 3725. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dana. I appreciate that. And I'll open it up for any council questions. Any questions here? Questions to my right? None? Okay. Councilmember Ford, any questions?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Seeing, or hearing none, I'll open up public comment for item C-2. Any member of the public wishing to come forward? Do so now. Welcome back, Betty.
Thank you. Just for public clarification, I noticed that hourly wage people are excluded. Is that because they are part-time, or are those full-time people, but we have them on a different tier? I'm, I, it's a little confusing.
Public comment is still open. AGP, do we have anybody on the phone for public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no raised hands in the queue.
Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back. And Dana, any comment on the hourly waged folks being included? Excluded, I mean, sorry?
Yes. Our part-time employees are enrolled in a different retirement system, actually administered by Pars, and they are not enrolled in PERS currently, under the current contract.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'll either entertain a motion or any other discussion this item?
I'll move to approve this item.
Okay.
I can read it. Let's see. That council take the following separate actions to adopt Resolution Number 8622, giving notice of the city its intention to approve an amendment to the contract between the city and CalPERS Board of Administration, and two, introduce for first reading by title only with further reading waived, Ordinance 653, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City of Morro Bay and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System, implementing Section 20516, employees sharing additional cost for local fire members in the Morro Bay Firefighters Association, IAFF, Local 3725.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the staff recommendation. Any further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Heller, please.
I'd like to thank, thank Dawn for reading all of that and pronouncing everything, and all the acronyms and everything, so.
I'll, I'll second that. Thank you.
The other thing is, for, for the public's, whoever is still watching, tremendous amount of work has gone into getting us to this point, a lot of it by our city clerk, Dana Swanson, who I'd like to thank for all your hours and hours of working on this, as well as our labor consultant. And it's come to council in closed session a number of times and been discussed, and it's, it's a lot of labor that goes into this document. It may not sound like much, but it's a tremendous milestone to get here. So thank you all who have worked for it, worked on this. Thank you.
I'll just say ditto to that. Thanks for those comments. I do also appreciate you guys so much for that, your folks. Okay, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, then, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Great, thank you. That brings us to item D, council declaration of any future agenda items. Anything for the good of the order? Yes, Councilmember Heller, please.
Mine is so long, I'm not even gonna start on it. I mean, it's, I'm kind of panicking as I get near the end of my term and thinking, there are all these things I wanted to get agendized and talk about. But I'm close enough now that I've just given up completely, so I don't have anything. Thank you.
I was getting ready to write. That's great. Hearing none? Okay. Thank you so much. I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting of the city council, the City of Morro Bay, will be held on Tuesday, October the 11th, 2022, at 5:30 PM. Thank you for the privilege of your time. Have a great evening.